Someone like to call and make a motion, please, to return the regular board meeting to public session? Mr. Meckler, second. Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present. I'd like to ask Mrs. Van Seis to please lead us in receding the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices and put them into their silent or vibrate mode, please. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the personnel consent agenda. Add a second executive session to the end of the meeting. We order the agenda and place item 8C and 8D after the approval of the minutes and approve the agenda as amended, please. Mrs. Beeger, second. Dr. McClary, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Dr. Martzloff, do we have anybody for recognition this month?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize another outstanding teacher. Mr. Thomas Nab is an art teacher at Dodge Elementary School. Mr. Nab has been teaching at Dodge since 1990 and is recognized by his colleagues as a visionary leader in art education, not only here in Williamsville, but across the region, and, in fact, across the country. In December, we learned that Mr. Nab is a 2018 recipient of two prestigious awards from the National Art Education Association. Mr. Nab exemplifies teaching at its finest, and this national recognition certainly speaks to the caliber of our teaching staff as a whole. With us tonight to tell us more about the awards and to introduce Mr. Nab is Dodge Elementary Principal Charlie Smilnich. Mr. Smilnich?
Interesting. I've never been up here and seen that before. It's kind of looking the other way, but I want to congratulate Mr. Nab for an incredible accomplishment. He won two awards, the Eastern Region Elementary Educator of the Year, as well as the National Elementary Educator of the Year. In addition, he just found out earlier in the day, he's actually the National Arts Association President-elect. He was just elected today for the entire nation, so he'll be the president of the National Arts Association, right here in Williamsville, which is pretty cool. Mr. Nab's been published multiple times in magazines. He presented with me in the School Administrators Association New York State Conference this year on how to evaluate art educators, because oftentimes, we find ourselves as administrators not familiar with art education, as a lot of our backgrounds come from elementary ed or classroom experience. But I'll say, Mr. Nab has, he also has a brick room. It's also called a brag room, where he displays artwork throughout our school all the time, every single day, and it's on display. He's a student-centered gentleman. He's an absolute brilliant in terms when it comes to art and anything. In terms of art, he teaches me every single day, and I learn so much from him. Not only is he a tremendous colleague and probably the best art educator I ever met, but he's also a friend. So, Mr. Nab, come on up and say a few words, and congratulations, sir.
It's obviously very exciting to receive this award, and I will never let the chance to advocate for art education go by. And I'll just start by saying, I remember when I was like eight or nine years old and having sets of pastels and crayons and markers and not wanting to use them because they were so beautiful themselves. And then I learned how to use them to create beautiful things. And then, as I became an adult, I discovered that I really loved teaching and combined those two things together. And people often ask me, what do I teach? And I say, I teach children. But I teach children through art. And through art, I teach them to make good judgments. I teach them that there can be multiple solutions to problems, that we can have diverse perspectives. Oftentimes, art-making involves complex problem-solving. Art allows us oftentimes to express what words and numbers can't always capture. And it teaches us to observe subtleties and to perceive differences and to appreciate those differences, which I think is so needed in our world today. And I think it's very important that we, our placement, how we place art in our district, tells the world how we value it. And so, I encourage you to support the arts and try to increase the arts that we offer in our district. I will also say that even though this award is given to me, it's very much a recognition of a team effort. I felt very supportive, supported while teaching in Williamsville. It's been a very supportive Board of Education for art education. I've had very supportive administrators, Mike Russo. I've been very fortunate. The three principals I've had at Dodge have been very supportive and supported the starting of the Brick Room Art Gallery that Mr. Smilnich mentioned as well. I've had great colleagues at Dodge over those 28 years, and very talented art colleagues in this district, and especially the ones I were closest with, the sixth, or the five other, I should say, elementary art teachers in the district are just extraordinary individuals. And then, of course, those that I've met through my state work and my national work has really influenced who I am and then what I bring back and what has allowed me to make a, or what has become the art program at Dodge. So, thank you for this recognition, and thank you for your support over the years. Thank you.
Nope. Okay, moving on. Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. Please demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving ideas, sharing opinions, but not engaging in attack. Thank you for your cooperation. This evening, our first speaker is Sam Campanelli.
Good evening. My name is Sam Campanelli. I'm a resident of Williamsville. I'm a teacher, and I'm an officer of the WTA Executive Board. I've spoken numerous times over the past few years on behalf of our union. Tonight, I speak mostly on my behalf. As we all know, the divisions between the board and the superintendent and the WTA from 2015 to 2017 were deep and wide. However, I promise you, I'm not here tonight to recount the events of the past few years. My hope is that we can close this difficult chapter by saying that all parties chose a course that they thought was right, and all parties experienced hurt, anger, and disappointment as a result. Two and a half years later, one question remains: Did anything of value result from this? My answer to this question is yes. For the first time in a long time, I truly believe the individuals that are currently sitting on the board want to do its best for the entire district. I don't feel as though their actions are guided by self-interest. I believe they are sincere when they say they want to form a positive and lasting partnership. I believe the days of the board promoting and maintaining false facades are over. As a union, two and a half years of strife have strengthened the bonds that we share with one another as professionals. However, this unification is positive for all parties, because our leadership team has come out of this ordeal equally committed and enthusiastic about forging an open and authentic relationship with the board and the superintendent. To Dr. Martzloff, I've stood at this microphone on numerous occasions. I've been critical of your actions. On one occasion, I stated to you that if I was wrong in any of my criticisms of your actions, I would apologize to you. After reading the 3028 decision and after several frank conversations with our executive board, the truth is, yes, you may have made some mistakes, but I respect you for acknowledging those mistakes. That's what an effective leader does. At the same time, some of the things you were accused of are also proven to be untrue. That door of accountability needs to swing both ways on this subject. Therefore, to you, Dr. Martzloff, I hope you'll accept my personal apology about the concerns I expressed about you that were proven to be either false or involve mitigating circumstances. In my view, you're not the leader you were when you first arrived, or even two years ago. As painful and distressing these past several years might have been for people and personally for you, I feel you're a better leader today because of it. If together, you, the board, and the WTA continue on this positive path we have taken together these past several months, I believe we can achieve any goals that we set going forward and overcome any obstacles that may come our way. Finally, I would also like to thank Dr. Martzloff, his entire negotiations team, and the board for working professionally, respectfully, and sincerely with the WTA negotiations team, and helping us to reach an agreement that is in the best interest of all stakeholders of this district. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Helene Sanders.
Hi. I just quickly want to speak about two things that were brought up at the last meeting, and one of them was the creation of another public speaking session, as I look to our former town attorney. We both know that the Tannenmore Amherst has two public speaking sessions, and the second one is to use both for those who didn't speak the first time, but also to hear what the board did and then be able to comment. And I frankly, for a number of years, have wondered why this board hadn't done it also. So, oh, and so would Ms. McClary. And also, on the second subject that came up, which was class size, I completely understand the budget restrictions that the board faces, but I do want to bring up one thing, and that is, I'll just give an example. There's an emerging field in 3D media, and I know that both my sons are interested in it, and I believe the current course load only includes 2D media. I'm not advocating for a particular stance. What I'm saying is that sometimes with growing fields, I know it hurts the budget, but with growing fields, we might have to add some courses, and that's all I want to say. Not a criticism, just an observation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak this evening? Okay, that's our last public speaker.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and addendums as presented, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. I would like to thank the following retirees for the service to the district: Kathy Coletta, Casey Middle, Clerk Typist, for the past 28 years of service, and our very own Mitzi Seraphin, the District Clerk and Records Management Officer, for the past 24 years of service. Thank you both. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on December the 12th, 2017? Mrs. Beeger, second. Dr. Vannader, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Nope, all in favor? Abstentions, opposed, excuse me, and abstentions? I think I saw everybody's hand. That would be a motion carrying unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to introduce the district's shared decision-making team, please?
Helen Mioski, she is here, and I'll ask her to come forward to the podium, share some information about shared decision-making, the process, the product, and what is being sent to the state.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. I'd just like to bring the attention of the board to this insert which you have in your packet. It's a report that we make on an annual basis of compliance. Each of our buildings has once again adopted and successfully implemented a shared decision-making plan in accordance with New York State regulations. As you probably know, Dr. Martzloff, Dr. Baylen, and Mrs. Beeger are board representatives on that team, as I am as well. And each year, I must say, I'm always just thrilled to see the various initiatives that each of our buildings implement, everything from a summer reading program, which has been in place since my children were at Country Parkway many years ago, to the Carry the Torch Program at Williamsburg East, which celebrates respect for self and others, to the South High School Program, in which they've managed to increase co-curricular participation an estimated 6% since 2014-2015, which I find to be incredibly encouraging and just a wonderful program. So, it's just, as I say, it's a celebration of many of the wonderful things going on in each of our individual schools. If you haven't done so, I encourage you to go on the district webpage and click on shared decision-making link, and you can see each of those plans for yourself. In addition, tonight, I believe Dr. Baylen will be submitting the biennial report for review. That's just something that we have to do under New York State regulations on a biennial basis, as it suggests, the name suggests. And I don't believe there are any significant changes at this time, but it's just a matter of procedure. So, thank you very much again.
Would someone like to make a motion to resolve and approve the biennial review and revised plan for participation in the shared decision-making as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you, second. Mr. Meckler, is there any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Beeger.
I just want to recognize what a great job Helen does facilitating that district decision, shared decision-making committee. It's a pleasure to be a part of. It's a wonderful opportunity and a great group to be a part of, to really see all the highlights and the goals that our schools are working on. So, thank you to her for bringing together this effort, for Dr. Baylen as well, and also to her point of looking at the school's website, our district really has done a beautiful job of putting those shared decision-making plans that school teams have worked on. And so, if you're interested in seeing the kinds of work that are happening, the committees that are working together to improve your child's school or the schools in our community, I highly recommend looking at them, because there's a lot of great information there. So, thank you to the district for making those plans so easily available, and again to Helen for facilitating such a good effort.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. The 33rd Annual School Client Conference, sponsored by Hudson Ross and Ross, will be held on this Friday, January the 12th, 2018, at the Millennium Hotel in Buffalo, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Dr. McClary and myself are registered to attend. Is there anyone else interested in coming along? Nope. The next dessert forum is Thursday, January the 28th, for the Erie County Association of School Boards. That will be at 6:30 p.m. at the Erie One Bowses. The executive director of the statewide school finance consortium, Dr. Rick Timms, is the guest speaker. He will be, excuse me, I will be out of town and not able to attend, so is there anybody else that would like to attend this event? Nobody? Okay. The 2018 Capital Conference will be held February the 11th and 12th this year in Albany. Would anyone like to attend this event? No. Does anyone have anything else to report from the New York State School Board Association? Moving right along. Our board visit to East High School last week had to be canceled due to inclemental weather. We will let everyone know when it's been rescheduled and to see who will be able to attend. The next school visitations are as follows. Friday, January the 19th, Forest Elementary, so next Friday, 7:30 a.m. I have down Dr. McClary, Mr. Meyer, and myself attending. Friday, February the 2nd, High Middle, 8:00 a.m. I've got Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I attending. Friday, February the 9th, Mill Middle at 8:00 a.m. Dr. McClary and myself are the two attending. And Monday, March 5th, Casey Middle at 8:00 a.m. I show Dr. McClary, Mrs. Seis, and I, and will be in attendance. The Mill Middle, February 9th, is the only one of these four coming up that only have two board members attending. Is there any chance we could get another board member to jump in on that one? Mrs. Beeger?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you both very, very much. Are there any other school visits that anybody else would like to volunteer for and hop on? Mrs. Beeger, go ahead.
I can go to the Forest. Is that it?
Forest this coming Friday, next Friday, excuse me, next Friday, the 19th.
And High Middle as well.
And the High Middle as well. Great. Anybody else? Great, thank you. At the December board meeting, Mr. Meyer asked about considering adding a second public expression to our regular board meeting. The board agreed to make this an action item at this meeting. So, would someone like to make a motion to add a second public expression period after the committee of the whole, beginning with the February 13th regular board meeting, and continue at regular board meetings on a four-month trial basis? Dr. Vannader, anybody like to second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Well, I'll comment, if I can. I mean, I spoke at length at our last board meeting, but I would just reiterate that in my opinion, this is a common sense proposal. In fact, I believe it should just be a permanent position on our agenda. But one of our goals is to increase public participation. This simply opens the door and expands that opportunity, and whether someone has something positive or negative to say about this board or about the district, I think there's value in hearing it, and so I would encourage everyone to vote unanimously in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is it acceptable that we're doing this for a four-month trial? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next board retreat will be Saturday, March the 3rd, in the district office boardroom here. We are still working on getting a facilitator and would welcome any suggestions anyone might have. Could I show a quick show of hands of any board members that are not able to attend the retreat? Assuming we are all attending still, correct?
What's the date again, just to...
Saturday, March the 3rd, 2018. Does that look good still, Mr. Meckler?
It looks good for me.
All right, great. In an effort to serve the community members who would not be able to attend on the forum on a Saturday morning, the next community forum will be held on Wednesday, January the 31st, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the North High School Cafeteria. This will be a first. This will be a shortened meeting. It'll only be two hours instead of our standard three hours, so we'll go from 7:00 o'clock till 9:00 o'clock. Could I have a show of hands who can attend this forum, please, on that night? So, I've got Dr. McClary, I've got Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, Mrs. Vasquez, who else? Was it Mrs. Van Seis? Okay, and myself. And Mr. Meckler's questionable.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The board has received the 2017-2018 Board Goals Progress Report. Would anyone like to add anything or comment on our progress? All right, I'm going to jump on it. There were a couple of goals that I wanted to just quickly follow up with. Under Board District and Community Engagement, goal number one, liaison reports. I know this seems to be a sore subject. I know we've had some issues with the email system as well. I do want to encourage all board members, please, try and make it a personal goal within two to three days of getting those liaison reports submitted. I do recommend, if it helps, I know I bring my notebook, my laptop here to my board meetings and liaison meetings, and I'm typing up the notes right then and there, so when the meeting's done, I hit that send button, and I'm kind of washing my hands of it. I know there were some technical issues as well, so on that note, I would encourage you that if you don't see your report come through within a week of it being submitted, put a query out to the district clerk, and she can take a look and see if it's something that's been missed, caught in the spam filter, or was not received at all. But it's absolutely imperative, especially being one of our board goals, that we get these in on a timely basis. Goal number six, I don't know if we want to, this is the goal where we talk about the three meetings with union leaders. After reading this and discussing, actually, a couple of the comments with some of these union leaders, I'm curious if we needed to kind of clarify that goal, because how the goal reads right now is it kind of says three meetings, but is that interpreted as three meetings with each union? Does the board shoot to meet with three unions? Do we go to meet with all the unions three times? And how do we want to interpret that? I kind of interpreted that we wanted to open-end it with all the unions and have up to three meetings in the calendar year with the unions if they were open to the idea. So, any comments, questions on that? Yes?
I think it perhaps could read more saying that we are inviting the various unions to have meetings with us, that we are very open to doing that and would accommodate common times and so forth. But I think perhaps it could be more of an invitation as opposed to this will happen.
Okay, I agree. Is that okay with everybody to slightly modify that goal? That we're not putting an open end on it? Dr. Martzloff, have you invited them? Do we need to send a formal invitation out to them from the board? Should I be sending this out? I want to make sure that all the union leaders know that we're, the door's open and we want to meet, if they so are inclined.
Well, I think the one administrators' union the board has met with, and they expressed their thinking on this particular subject to the board. As far as other unions within the district, no, I have not invited them. Seeing that this is a board goal, it probably should come from the board president by invitation, and you also want to keep in mind what the venue for such a meeting would be.
Okay, perfect. Nope, thank you. I will make that an action item for myself to follow up with. Under minor thing, under student achievement, we need to correct goals 1, 2, and 4, because we have progress indicators have comments within them, so just need to make an administrative update on that. And the last one I wanted to comment on was board efficacy. Goal number one, transitioning to searchable digital format. I don't know that we've made much progress on this. I don't know, I think we were supposed to talk about it at the retreat we had, and we did not. So, I don't know if we want to put this back on the agenda for the March retreat or how we should proceed on that. Any comments?
We can talk about it at the March retreat. That's fine with me.
Okay. That would be perfect, then. Anybody else have any questions or comments on our goals? Nope. Perfect, thank you. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to give your community update, please?
Sure. Recently, I sent out to all of our staff, administration, and faculty, a survey with two very open-ended questions on the survey, to ask for people to provide us with their thoughts in regards to what the district's priorities and efforts should be based on in the coming years. In addition, I also sent... Uh, in addition, I also sent that out via WITS to all of our students and our parents. And, uh, they have received it and to date, uh, within one week, we've had, uh, well over 800 responses from 800 different people, uh, rather, which is pretty good. And I'll be sending out a reminder, uh, at some point later this week. And then, uh, following that, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a survey that'll go out to the parents of all 10th and 11th grade students about class rank, whether or not that should be considered for elimination, uh, now. And I'll report back to the board on that at our next board meeting. And then lastly, in March and into April, we'll have a survey about languages other than English. What do parents feel should be the languages we strongly consider? If we were to enhance the program, where would it make the most sense to do that? Would it make sense to do it at the elementary level? Should we add a language at the middle school level? Should we have another language elective at the high school level? Those are some of the questions we'll be asking our, our parents. Um, back to class rank, just for a moment, just to share with the board, uh, student perspective. We had a superintendent's inter-high advisory council meeting, uh, right before the break. And I asked them about class rank and the possibility of removing it for current 10th and 11th graders. And, uh, there seemed to be wide support to do that for the current 10th grade, where only two students said no, keep it as it is, out of about 40 students in the room. And then, um, there were seven students who voted no for removing class rank for current 11th graders. Um, after the, at the end of our discussion, the remaining students overwhelmingly thought that class rank should be removed, uh, not just for 10th, but also for 11th graders. So I want to share that feedback with the board from a student perspective. Um, and as we begin to try to come to a decision, hopefully in February, of where exactly it goes, if anywhere. So, uh, that concludes my community update. Happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
One question, Dr. Marsloff. Uh, for the, the 11th graders, uh, for the seven students who, uh, commented that they want to retain it the way it is, uh, did they give any commentary or any, was it possible to get commentary as to why?
Yeah, I think the, um, the overwhelming sense was that 11th grade students had invested themselves in the current system, if you will, up to this point, and were nearing the finish line, which is their senior year. And so therefore, they didn't think it was necessarily a good idea, uh, to remove it and take it away. Um, at least that's what those students expressed.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vasquez, anything I missed? I know you're the liaison for PSYAC and anything that you want to add?
No, um, that's exactly what they said, that they just felt that students were already vested into that, to that program and to being ranked, and they didn't feel that would be fair for them to be removed from it at this point. But that was the minority opinion of the class, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, of the group of students.
Yes, Mrs. Beeger?
Just a comment, I'm glad that the district is going forward with those surveys that you mentioned about specific topics, the class rank and, um, the foreign language. Those were both, um, talked about at length at the community forum, but it's nice that we're opening that up for people who aren't at board meetings or aren't attending community forums to have a voice and really, um, to gauge the entire school district or parents on those, on those issues. So I'm glad the district is, is going through with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the board has received the 2017-2018 District Goal Progress Report. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Dr. Marsloff on this? Yeah, Mrs. Beeger?
Uh, I have a question. It, it's just a quick one, overall, I think these, these goals are excellent. I have a question about, uh, examining the existing disciplinary practices. I like a lot of, uh, some of the work here and ideas around, um, looking at data, making sure that we're, um, doing what's best for our students. I noticed that, uh, restorative practices and work group established, um, meeting dates are scheduled. And I'm curious about, um, that initiative. I, I, um, I'm interested in restorative practices, and so I'm curious how our district is exploring and, uh, pursuing that.
Dr. Siri, would you like to comment on that particular goal item?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you for the question. Um, yes, we've established a work group. It's a small work group, it's begun with administrators, primarily assistant principals, myself, and it's co-facilitated by Lynda Ruway, who has quite a bit of, um, knowledge and experience in that area. And what we've begun with is a book study and also some review of literature, best practice literature. And, um, how, what we've learned thus far, we've had one meeting, um, and have the others scheduled. What we've learned thus far is that you really have to be very planful when implementing a restorative practices, uh, program. So we're not looking just at restorative justice, but at restorative practices. And what does that mean in terms of professional development, educating our entire community? And hand in hand with that is also looking, as you mentioned, uh, looking at our data and our disciplinary responses, and really just analyzing to see if we have any patterns in, in the data that we need to respond to. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Dr. Siri, would you be able to share the title of the book? Or if not, if you don't have it handy, can you email it to us later? It'd be great, thank you.
Dr. Venator?
Uh, I have two comments. Um, the first one is regarding the, uh, distribution of this initial survey that just went out a few, few weeks back. This may seem like a particular point, but I think it's important, from a vernacular standpoint, to make sure we're using correct language. I think this is an excellent first start to survey the opinions and general hearts and minds of the community. But looking at thought exchange and its technology, I would say it's not officially a survey as you would normally carry forth. I think it's excellent for, uh, obtaining a baseline feel, but I think in order to make strategic decision-making, uh, ideas, just the way it's collecting information, we'll probably have to follow up. So I think it's a very good way, it's an excellent initial start to capture general opinions of what's going on in the community. But when you actually look at how do you want to obtain information at a large percentage rate of respondents from a community, um, I think we'll have to perhaps, uh, discuss a little bit further with maybe, you know, another consulting group on how to do that. Um, having done some research on thought exchange, um, I, I think, and, and looking at reviews, um, from other, uh, either companies or educational institutions, once again, I think this is a great way uh, to obtain some basic information to help guide us. I just, you know me, I'm all about due diligence. I want to bring forth that, um, it, it's kind of the start of moving down the path. I think it's a great exchange for ideas and brainstorming, um, and to kind of categorize where the interests are in, in the, in the community. So, and I'd be happy to, you know, we can have further discussion on how more robust, uh, surveying will allow us to get the information that we need than one to kind of hone down what, what we're carrying from the community into actionable pockets of information. And then the other thing that resonated with me, this is, this is going to be sound kind of odd, but I do have a sophomore at East. Um, I know technology is an important component of, of the district's plan, which I love, um, but I have to say this out of fairness to my son Parker. Uh, Wi-Fi does not work at East 50% of the time. So I like the fact that, uh, with the technographic attributes of our high schoolers, um, I like the fact that that's a, that's a goal that's on there. So, promised him I'd bring that up.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? Okay. Moving on, Dr. Marsloff, would you like to start the 2018-2019 Budget Development Presentation, please?
Sure. Uh, for this particular presentation, uh, myself and Mr. Maturski will be sharing information with the board as it relates to the budget. There's also a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation at each board member's seat. And we'll start off, as we always do, with our 2018-19 Budget Development focusing on our mission. The mission of the Williamsville Central School District, a community characterized by diversity, high expectations, and support for learning, is to empower all students to develop their unique potential and character, assume responsibilities of citizenship and leadership, and to thrive in a challenging and rapidly changing global community through the commitment of our quality staff, working in partnership with students, parents, and community, and utilizing visionary programs in a nurturing environment of mutual respect and dignity. This is what we aim to do as a school district. It, it is also focused on our beliefs, which says that our highest priority, as it should be, is our students. Um, each person has intrinsic value. Communities and schools are interdependent and are only successful in an ongoing mutually responsible partnership. The opportunity for learning is everywhere. Learning how to learn is as important as what is learned. Everyone can learn, everyone can experience success. Continuous improvement of existing skills and acquisition of new skills are essential for success in a rapidly changing world. In addition, our beliefs continue. Positive self-esteem enhances learning. People who think critically and creatively will make better decisions throughout life. Excellence in our program requires continual evaluation. Optimism is essential. Everyone needs a global perspective to thrive in a world of diversity. Parent and family involvement is essential to successful learning. People achieve when effort and perseverance toward excellence are encouraged, supported, and celebrated. So when we look at, at all of our belief statements, it's critical, uh, to take into account that these, uh, belief statements were put forward by members of our community back in the mid 1990s. This plan was originally developed, our shared, our strategic plan, our long-term plan, in 1995. So at some point, we're going to want to reengage with our community, as Dr. Venator mentioned, in a way to allow people to have input into what are our beliefs in 2018? And what are our beliefs in 2019? What are our, what's our five-year goal look like for 2023? Where are we looking to go in terms of how we educate our children? So part of doing that is looking at our budget. We have another, a number of items I'm going to mention here that sometimes are asked about in the community. Um, my first year in, in the Williamsville Central School District, we cut almost $5 million from the budget. It was a very difficult year. And some of the things that came up was, why do we need this universal pre-K for, um, the students that we offer it to? Well, it's 100% state-funded. You get rid of the universal pre-K, you also will get rid of the revenue that's funding it. We only fund it up to the level that the state allows. Um, same thing with child and nutrition services, it's self-sustaining. So any federal subsidies for free and reduced meals, any of the money that comes in when a student buys a breakfast or buys a lunch, is put back into the program to pay for the program's operation. Um, in a similar fashion, community education, all of the different areas within community education that we offer across the district are self-sustaining. In other words, a person paying tuition to take a community education course, those dollars go into maintaining the community ed program. We also have a number of items that relate to expense-driven state aid. School transportation, essentially, when you, um, take out the dead miles in the formula, is reimbursed to the district at about a 90% rate. So it's not really an area you would generally look to much to save much money. You would save in your first year, but then that's going to be offset the next year, um, to the tune of 10 cents on the dollar. That's not really a great, uh, way to look at places, uh, to reduce a budget and really see a significant positive impact, not to mention all of the safety concerns that come up when students, uh, have to walk to school. We also get textbook aid for each of our students, software and hardware aid, and school library aid. All those aid categories, um, come to, uh, around $100 per student if you add up, uh, textbook, software, hardware, and school libraries. So those are all areas where we can make cuts and reductions, but, um, often you're not getting, uh, the bang for your buck, so to speak. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski and he'll continue on to share some of the information on the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff. Uh, to continue on, uh, the expense increases you'll be seeing are broken into two categories. Uh, the first category is, uh, program continuation. And all of these expenses are, uh, needed to provide for the current programs we have in place in the district. Our largest, um, increase, as you have seen from some prior information at the last, um, board meeting, is, uh, in our salaries. So our projected contractual increase at this point in time is about $3.6 million. Uh, we also have, uh, indicated that the New York State Teacher Retirement System, uh, will have a rate increase this year. Uh, we have not received a final rate, so therefore, um, we, that total increase is to be determined. Um, our social security payments that are the district's share, uh, will increase about $200,000, and that is based upon the fact that our salaries are increasing. Health insurance, um, is projected to go up $750,000. And our BOSI services, uh, to go up $117,000. Our total BOSI's budget is just a little bit under $6 million. So this is for all increases throughout that entire budget. Uh, transportation, this $250,000 increase represents the amount that we will need to pay our contractor. And then, um, moving to another area, exceptional education and student services, uh, we have an increase projected for tuition that we must pay other school districts, or not other school districts, but private placement areas, uh, for our students who are in those settings. Uh, that is projected to go up $250,000. Um, we also are looking to add an elementary 811 self-contained class for students with autism, and this is due to enrollment changes, that's an $85,000 increase, and add two elementary 15-to-1 self-contained classes, which represents two FTEs, and that also is to meet projected enrollment needs. Uh, that is $170,000. So, uh, for our continuation, uh, program continuation expense, the total increase would be $5,422,000. Now, moving to the next area, which is program support, these are items that we would have thought about, uh, and we would like to increase if we possibly could in our budget, uh, so they would improve our current programs. Um, on the instruction side, um, we're looking at creating two instructional coaching positions, uh, with the emphasis at both the elementary and middle school level. This would be $170,000. We would like to enhance our academic intervention services for our students. Uh, this amount was calculated at $40,000. We also would like to provide more opportunities for our students in extracurricular programs. This would be a $22,500 increase. And we are looking at, um, enhancing our load program, and that amount is still being reviewed. Uh, and so that is a to-be-determined at this point in time. In the exceptional education and student services area, uh, we would like to implement a pilot with the addition of teaching assistant for self-contained 811 and/or 1211 classes. Uh, that would be an $85,000 increase. We would also, um, look at adding a behavior specialist for all K through 12, uh, program at $85,000. Increase the number of school counselors that serve our middle and elementary levels. That would be four FTEs, which would amount to $340,000. And add a, uh, .5 FTE occupational therapist that would support our programs, $42,500. Moving to our instructional technology, um, we would like to add a 1.0 FTE microcomputer support technician. This position would be in district office and it would support our infrastructure, uh, provide, um, more support for the current, uh, programs and software and hardware that are running there, as well as provide a backup to our current people working in, in, uh, our program. That is $110,000. And we'd also look at adding a trainer position that would help develop training materials and, uh, provide staff training for software and hardware throughout the district. That would be a $90,000 increase. Uh, administrative, uh, for the administration area, um, we are looking at implementing administrative changes at the elementary and high schools that would provide assistant principals at each elementary schools and changing the faculty managers to full-time administrators at our high schools. Uh, this type of transition may occur over three years. Uh, the cost would be $600,000. And then adding an administrative position at Transit Middle School at a cost of $140,000. There are some district-wide items we've discussed. Um, increasing our professional development budget to provide more opportunities for our staff and administration to, um, learn a lot of the new items... and administration to um learn a lot of the new items that are coming our way. That would be a hundred thousand dollars. Increase our supply budget, sixty thousand dollars. Dr. Marsloff mentioned many of those cuts that occurred um several years ago. Uh, that was one area that was hit significantly, as was the next item, which is increasing our equipment budget uh to meet new school and department needs. That would be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar increase. So all totaled, those uh program support increases represent two million ten thousand dollars. And then just summarizing it, um, our current budget is a hundred eighty-six million one hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred ten dollars, and the total of both continuation and support items equals seven million four hundred thirty-two thousand dollars for a initial uh draft uh budget of a hundred ninety-three million five hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred ten dollars, and that would be a budget-to-budget increase of three point nine-nine percent.
So moving forward, what are our next steps? Number one, we need to prioritize possible budget reductions and targeted enhancements. Um, assess the mandated cost increases and see exactly where those fall in line, and review uh our revenue, including our two thousand eighteen-nineteen New York State aid projections and our tax cap calculation uh for this year. So looking forward uh for our timeline, uh, this evening, we're looking at our program continuation report. Our next meeting will review our tax cap and our other preliminary revenue outlook and consider any budget reduction options. At our board meeting on, in March thirteenth, we'll have a preliminary budget presentation and consider any proposition resolutions for the May uh budget vote. In March, we have a budget work session to review the preliminary budget, discuss any reduction items as needed, and adopt any proposition resolutions. That's an important date, because typically, the New York State has been coming out with its uh approved budget right on uh April first. On April tenth, we have a board meeting to adopt the two thousand eighteen-nineteen proposed budget. And then May third is our budget hearing, with May fifteenth being our community vote. So this uh takes us through uh the timeline. Um, at this time, I'll take any questions about any of the items. Uh, certainly, these items uh were discussed with amongst the leadership team, um, our school principals, who have talked with uh their individual staff members about uh some of these particular potential enhancements. Obviously, we're not going to be able to do uh all of it, but it's uh, we thought it was important to share with the board some of the things under consideration. So happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mrs. Beeger.
Sorry. The administration consideration for implementing administered administrative changes at elementary and high school, um, if that's to occur over three years, would that amount uh that's projected be in this budget? Or would that be spread across three years of implementation?
Great question, Mrs. Beeger. It would be divided by three, so it would be about two hundred thousand per year over a three-year period.
Thank you.
That's a really rough number, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
Question regarding adding school counselors um at middle and elementary levels. Are the school counselors called upon to handle behavior incidences as they're occurring? Are they sometimes called to the classrooms?
Occasionally, um, they are, yes.
Okay, and I'm just curious, um, what the thought was with adding the school counselors? Would it, was it to address these outbursts that are happening in classrooms that we know happen? Or is it the flip side, um, to increase the actual counseling that's needed? Um, from experience, I know that in some buildings, um, from where I work, counselors have scheduled sessions with students, but then they're often interrupted because they're called upon to go handle a crisis situation in a classroom.
Yeah, I would answer, the answer to that for us would be both. Um, certainly, uh, school counselors play an important role in the mental health and emotional stability of our students. Um, if, there was a survey done amongst superintendents uh across New York State in two thousand seventeen who indicated that their number-one concern was the mental health and well-being of students. And a lot of that uh plays back and is related to social media exposure and uh the items that take place uh with social media. So certainly, we think it's important to enhance whenever we can, um, our mental health supports for our students. In addition, um, there's a new uh New York State regulation that speaks to the idea that elementary students must have access to a school counselor. What access means can be interpreted perhaps a little bit differently. Um, but at any rate, we don't have school counselors at our elementary schools currently. We have social workers and uh school psychologists. So having a part-time school counselor at our elementary school uh would help us address that mandate as well. So certainly, a lot of challenges uh that we have to uh meet and uh overcome, uh, but it is one area that we think i- is very important to the development of our students.
Thank you, and then just to follow up on that, the addition of the behavior specialist, is that um someone who would sort of continue on with the restorative practice implementation? Or is that a different line of thinking? I'm just trying to figure out the thinking.
More of a someone that does um very specific professional development when it comes to student behaviors and helping teachers uh address those behaviors in uh the most optimal ways uh so that our students can be successful. We do this to an extent now where we contract out with certain individuals, but this would be the idea of having um a behavior specialist on our own staff to provide training and support uh to all of our teachers, um, as well as our administrators and mental health staff.
And this person would be trained for K to twelve? Just, I'm just thinking that through. We have a lot of schools.
We do, yes.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Mrs. Vance Ice.
Um, I think this budget looks great, first of all, that we're still, even though times are very trying and we're not quite sure what the state aid, that we're still able to maintain and even bring in some very necessary items to meet student needs. Um, just in regards to the software aid, uh, I was going to bring this up for the committee of the whole, wondering if we can find out specifically software aid or potentially the cost of what it would be to bring in um software castle learning. Um, I've heard from different staff um at the various high schools that they believe that that is a extremely resourceful tool. I find it um as a teacher to also be very resourceful, and it's incredible because the opportunities it provides, but for all students. It's very user-friendly uh for both teachers and students. It even has capability where these questions, practice questions, and further learning, um, student with special needs could have it read to them, all sorts of capabilities. But really, it helps them prepare um for assessments and regents exams and all of these things. So I was wondering if that happens to be on the software list, or what it, what the cost would be to the district?
I think um we'd be happy to look into it. It'd be something we'd want to have conversations about, first off, with our principals and talk about it there, as well as some of our leaders within our technology department. Um, I do uh know of colleagues in other districts that use that particular platform and speak very highly of it, so um we could get further in- information for the board at a later date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Venator?
Uh, yes, out of curiosity on page six, at the bottom, um, can you just provide some context uh around increase in equipment budget to meet school department needs? Just to give us a, an idea of what that might, what that might cover? That cover microscopes, new microscopes for science classes, specimens, things of that nature? Or is it more larger equipment purchases?
It can be uh anything from computers and other technology that we use to servers. Um, it could be things like um uh equipment for our buildings and ground staff, uh, equipment for our custodial staff, uh, equipment for athletics. You know, we're always replacing, for example, you know, motors on the baskets that break all the time that are a couple thousand dollars apiece. Um, there's a number of equipment things that we could replace. Um, at our, over the last few years, we've um replaced and enhanced all of our fitness equipment in our three high schools. We could utilize some of those funds to do that type of work at the middle school, or perhaps even the elementary school. So um really, the uh, the equipment could cover any and all of these things and more. Um, but certainly, um, we've, we've done a good job over the last three or four years, uh led by, by Mr. Maturski, in enhancing our equipment budget so that we have more opportunities to purchase things that our kids and staff need.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Couple of questions. Um, on page three of this packet that we have under the slide entitled Program Continuation, uh, two items. First one, uh, transportation uh reflects a contractual increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, two questions in relation to this. One, are we using the same contractor that we've used in the past? And two, uh, is my understanding correct that the state aid will uh supply the bulk of that funding? Or is that straight from our district?
Mr. Maturski, you want to address that?
Certainly. Um, first of all, in regard to um the contractor increase, it is um per the amounts on, regulated by our contract and CPA, it is still the same contractor. Uh, so we have one more year left. It would be eighteen-nineteen on the last five-year agreement with them. Uh, the um, the aid will increase the following year. So it's just as Dr. Mars- Marsloff mentioned before, um, it's always a delay in the uh, the expense to the aid. So the following year in nineteen-twenty, the higher expenses from what we pay in eighteen-nineteen will be aided. So we will get more state aid in that next year.
Okay. Um, second question in relation to the same slide. Um, health insurance, there's a projected increase of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, what kind of variables uh go into that number? How confident can, can we be in that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure? Or can that just change totally overnight?
I think uh we're fairly confident in it, but i- it's also to agree, you don't know. You're trying to predict something, you know? Um, for the majority of our employees, the health insurance rates are established in the summer. Um, for everyone else, it's the following January. So you're trying to predict something that's going to happen next January first, two thousand nineteen. You don't know. We're also going out to the market to do an RFP with health insurance that could impact this potential um increase. And depending on what we get back from that, we, it may change the number. If you were to have, say, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars added to the budget, and we found out that we didn't need it, or we saw um that it was flat, or even a decrease in health insurance spending, we would take that account into, in next year's budget preparations for twenty nineteen-twenty?
Thank you.
Can't believe I just mentioned a budget, nineteen-twenty. That seems like it was a long ways away, um, years ago.
I have a few que- couple of questions here. Um, state aid reimbursement and program continuation. What uh, I know you mentioned transportation. What other areas um are reimbursable or or provided by state aid? For example, uh, BOSIs and that sort of stuff.
BOSIs, we get aid on a number of our items within the BOSI's budget. Um, I think the rest we've, we've talked about, libraries, um, software, hardware. Um.
What about like the uh adding of an eight-one-one or a fifteen-one self-contained, any of that stuff?
No, I don't see any increase in state aid from that.
Okay. Uh, what about uh any of the um areas under program support consideration? Would any of those be eligible for any state aid or reimbursement?
Under, I'm sorry, program support?
For, would that, you want us to consider the new, the new additions? Any of the new, like, from page five, uh, the four slides, page five and six?
No. No, there's no new revenue, it's only expense, um, unfortunately.
Oh, that's too bad, I gotta ask. Um, and then can you elaborate a little bit more on what the thought process is under both uh the enhancing the load program and the additional funding for the extracurricular program, please?
So with the load program, I think uh, as I stated earlier, we're, we're not sure where we're going with that. There could be no budgeted increase, um, depending on what we decide to do. Um, it also is dependent on how many positions. Do you start with a pilot at one elementary school? Do you start with a pilot at a high school? Do you do all your middle schools, you know, enhancing load? We just, we don't have enough information to share with the board at this time, that's why it's a to-be-determined.
I see, I, I was, the reason why I was asking specifically on that was if it had anything to do with uh prior year's discussions of introducing load at a younger age or anything like that, but it doesn't sound like that would be this.
No, that, that was part of prior year discussions, but again, we want to hear back from our constituents about this particular item to see what's important uh to them. Um, when it comes to extracurricular programs, we're always looking to add. In the, in the past few years, we've added link crew, web crew to help students with their adjustment to middle school and adjustment to high school. We've added uh sources of strength advisors, which the board heard about last spring in a presentation uh that we brought forward here. We've tried to add new robotics programs at the elementary and middle schools to engage students in various STEM activities. So we're always looking to add more and provide a richer um experience. At some point, um, as a district, we may need to consider the possibility of late buses at all of our schools. Um, certainly, there's lots of opportunities to have extracurricular activities, to have AIS, all those things, but if students struggle to have a ride home or a ride to their daycare provider, or wherever it is they're going, that um makes it very challenging, and we may need to consider that in future years' budgets.
Is there something specific you're thinking of? This seems like a pretty precise dollar amount, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
It's based on just the percentage of what's there now.
I understand, okay, thank you. Any other questions from any other board members? Yeah, Dr. Venator?
Sure, and, and obviously, I'm, I'm looking at this for the first time, so uh, I, I'm just curious, where would maybe the following concepts that are on uh either the board goals or or the district goals, where would they fall within the different revenue buckets? So um, character education to help reduce bullying in middle schools, uh, high schools, uh, eliminating uh the use of drugs and reducing the use of e-cigarettes uh in the high schools, um, things of that nature. Uh, perhaps even uh just general character education and things around wellness as it pertains to making sure it's a healthy uh well environment for, for students. So that could go beyond character education, et cetera. Where would that fall in either um the program continuations or program support considerations?
That'd be more uh under program support considerations.
Okay. But have, have they been called out anywhere in here? I mean, I, I'm just looking for the respective buckets that we have with numbers against them um, from an explanation standpoint or expense area. I, I'm not necessarily seeing, I see, you know, instructional coaching, uh, behavior specialists, et cetera. Knowing that that's just a, you know, I think wellness and, and some of those issues that we've talked about around the board goals and even the uh district goals, um, we know that if we're going to institute new programs or augment programs, uh, funding will have to be there at some point. So, so for me, I, I would love to see potentially a, a breakdown of, of, or consideration of where those expense areas and the explanation could be or around those particular items. So bullying, character education, e-cigarette use enforcement, uh, drug uh enforcement use. And then the other thing, I already brought it up earlier, but I also think uh the equipment, given the fact that that equipment budget is so huge, it could be facilities, it could be athletics, it could be, uh, I, I'd love a, maybe a, just a little bit finer breakdown to help understand what's more academic and instructional versus um, you know, just larger and institutional. Give us a little bit more of a, an understanding of where we are.
Wh- what does that do for you, Dr. Venator, to have it broken down like that?
Well, you know, I was going to bring this up in the committee of the whole, you know, I, I, listening to community members, I, I'll give you one example, this is an N of one, so I, I'm not putting a ton of faith in it, but uh, you know, it's, it's fact. So the PTSA Williamsville East has provided five thousand dollars to East High School so that the science uh class can have specimens for proper education. This is not augment- This is not augmenting the regular curriculum, this is not extracurricular. But when I hear that the PTSA is helping to fund what I would consider, certainly as a biased scientist, proper education, I want to make sure that we are making sure that we have the funding for our baseline initiatives, to make sure that when we're running kids through biology or AP biology, or other scientific classes, that their microscopes are still up to grade and up to speed, and that we're not relying on ancillary funding for, to me, you know, things that should be part of our budget. And so for that, that's why I went right to that question, to help understand, I figured it was going to be a very large bucket, but that would be helpful for me to understand what is more instructional, what is more facilities, institutional, that's just a wide, a wide range. But when I hear that $5,000 is helping to pay for specimens, I do say to myself, gosh, well, what happens if the PTSA decided not to provide that funding? Are students not receiving not only a good education that we expect in Williamsville, but a great education that we want to move for, towards, in the district?
I think the PTSAs do that at a variety of our schools, if not all of our schools, provide funding for things like supplies, additional things that the school needs, field trips, things of that nature. When it comes to the equipment funds and how those are delineated, we oftentimes don't make those decisions until the school year that we're in that's impacted by that budget. And there's some reasons for that. One of the reasons is we want to make sure we know what our needs are. So for example, if we had a serious cyber threat to the district, we might need to spend $500,000 out of our equipment budget to deal with that cyber threat. And if we sat here at the board table and said, oh, we're going to spend, you know, 300,000 here, 100 here, 50 here, 50 there, and we might appear disingenuous because something else came up that was, you know, more pressing, more of an emergency situation. And we also ask for input from our principals, what is it that you need? So for example, in a number of our schools, our furniture is, it's older, just put it that way, and we're in the process of replacing it. To replace all of our classroom furniture in the whole district is, it's impossible. You know, we spent three years upgrading this boardroom. You heard one principal say, oh, I didn't notice this monitor here, that's a new thing. The screens are new, the projector is new, the carpet is new, next will be, those chairs will be new. So it's a continuous process over a several-year period of investing in new equipment for all of our schools, our district office, all of our support functions, and it ebbs and flows. It might not be the answer you're looking for, but that's typically what's happened in the past.
Sure. No, thank you. I think it's a great answer, and I certainly recognize things that come up mid-year, you know, cyber threats, certainly things of that nature. Just for me, helping to break down these things into some smaller granular buckets could be helpful. The other thought that, and I think you made an excellent point, that things are changing all the time, you know, just a thought comes to mind, we just talked about the district goals and reviewing them, and we talked about our board goals, it might be helpful for us to take the time, now that we have a working budget, to actually look at our goals and to see, do we have the funding to actually execute some of the goals? I mean, as I go back to the wellness examples, right now, and again, I'm looking at this for the first time, I'm not seeing, you know, a fair amount of money, or even perhaps any buckets for character education, additional enforcement on drug and bullying. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it may be in here somewhere, but I do think that it does cost money to institute programs and execute against these things, and if they're not in the budget, in this proposed budget, it's hard to put them on as goals. Otherwise, they're just straw dogs that are going to sit on a page.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
I don't want to speak for what the district had in mind, but I do see, Dr. Venator, how possibly adding a behavior specialist and increasing school counselors at the elementary levels could definitely attribute to building character education, especially in the elementary level, since it's more of a proactive approach instead of a disciplinary.
Oh, I would agree, and I welcome those types of comments. Obviously, I'm not a specialist in this, but I do know that, you know, many of us, when we've talked to the community here, okay, we've got rampant drug use, you know, we've got rampant e-cigarettes being used, you can't use certain bathrooms at East High School because they're smoked up, and it's certainly an issue that I think resonates with many of us, bullying, character education. And that's great, and I think one behavior specialist for K through 12 is a good step, but I'm not sure that is the level of energy that a number of us were looking for when we put down some of these things on our board goals, just to be very frank and honest. So I think, I think it's a, we also have to recognize that this guy's not the limit, we can't just reach into an endless bucket of money. So I'm fully cognizant of that, but I do think it's helpful that if we're going to be fair to ourselves and the community, and we're going to say, here are our objectives, let's make sure that when we're looking at the budget, we do have funding. Some things may not cost money, some things may be kindly provided by the PTSA, but it would be nice to make sure that for the key objectives we have, we have the money to do those things.
Just, Dr. Venator, for the record, this is not a working budget.
Oh, no.
I use that term, and I just want to be clear with the board and with the community, this is not a working budget. This is a budget of what exists to roll everything over in a bunch of hopeful items that we hope to be able to consider, if not this year, then the year after that, or the year after that, or the year after that. That's all this is at this juncture. I don't want you to think this is, this is all packaged up nice and neat, and this is a done deal.
No, not at all, and I fully appreciate that, and I think, and please, let me be very clear, there's a tremendous amount of work here, I think the buckets are, you know, very fruitful. I just want to, at this point, at this juncture, given the fact that we're in that planning phase, and we are looking at budgets, especially this is my first time through admittedly, on the board, just to try to get an understanding of, hey, we have a, you know, for lack of a better term, a straw dog budget here, it's our first shot at it. If we do have some of these goals that are there, and we know that some of those goals may require money for certain programmatic developments, et cetera, we may just have to shape things over time, to a certain extent, based on budget. So, thank you.
Macca?
So, just checking, Dr. Venator, if I can rephrase what you said, and maybe you could double-check me, it sounded like administrators had significant input into their dream portions of the budget, but you feel that the board needs the same opportunity? Would that be a fair characterization, or?
No, not, I don't know if I'd phrase it that way. I think, looking at the district goals in the packet and reflecting on some of our board goals, and I'll just take a few examples, because this is what I've talked to the community about, character education, reducing bullying, I'm just giving you a few examples, reducing drug use and e-cigarette use. I think we're at the beginning stage, if we want to take on those goals. First, Dr. Marsloff, we've talked about this, we need to first assess where we stand, and we also have to come up with some metrics of where we are now, where we're going to go. But if we recognize that we want to change those things, those will potentially involve some type of money and time. And in just looking at this initial, very preliminary, not whole budget, I'm just looking at it going, gosh, you know, if we're going to do those things, we may need some type of bucket or expense area to go beyond just a behavior specialist, which is excellent, an excellent step in that direction. I just want to make sure that, you know, if we do have goals, we have the funding to actually accomplish those goals. Otherwise, I think we need to be honest with each other, and we have to recognize, again, there's no endless pot of money. I'm not saying we need to do all these things, we would love to do everything, we'd love to have all new music wings and new microscopes, and et cetera, et cetera. I think we just need to be thoughtful, and in looking through here, again, it's the first pass, one of the areas I looked at was, gosh, okay, where's the wellness or the funding that's going to allow us to put in some of these programmatic developments? That's it. And so, that's the benefit, I think, of this dialogue and of having this early on, is to say, you know, am I missing something, am I not? And, you know, is there interest on the part of the board and the administration and the leadership in the district to consider putting funding against some of these things if we value them?
And, Dr. Venator?
Value them, then maybe we would change the goals.
This is the time in the process to bring up questions like that, so you're not out of line, don't worry. This is the opportunity in years past that other board members have come up and said, you know what, I'd like to look at maybe adding X, Y, and Z, and this is the opportunity for you to do that. So you're doing the right thing. Mrs. Leatherboro?
I'm just thinking, you're giving me an idea here, we have our retreat in mid-March, is that?
First weekend in March.
First weekend in March, and looking at this timeline, could we possibly, if the board is interested, use a portion of the time of the retreat to reexamine our goals, going off of what Dr. Venator said, since we will have more budgetary information by that time? In case we want to look, you know, instead of paying a facilitator for the full time of our retreat, maybe give ourselves an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, where we can sort of look at those goals and say, okay, now that we know what money we're dealing with, do we want to revise any of these? Or even look towards next year, since we set those goals so early in the year?
I think a discussion of that nature is probably best served to be in a public forum like this. As much as I like the idea, I think, I think we should hash that out probably here at the table in the public. But, and on that note too, I think March, I'm going to guess, Mr. Maturski and Dr. Marsloff are looking to try and get the finalized, well, not so much finalized, but trying to get the budgets as close to being finalized as we can get until we get the date number, and then start to roll out the last minutes. But to Dr. Venator's request of, you know, how much would that cost or something like that, now's the time to ask that question, so we can add it as a potential item, as an action item next month, or in March, to come back to and say, you know what, that's going to cost us $50,000, and that's important to the board. So let's make sure we add that to the budget, or whatever.
If I may, Sean, you know, my understanding, and Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understood this was he was simply saying that moving forward as we go through this budget, he would like to know, and I would agree with this, how much of our budget is behind our board goals? How are we funding our board goals and in what way? So that we can track our accomplishment of those goals. I don't know if that's fair to say?
Yeah.
Can I just say, just for clarity purposes, we've never built a budget around board goals, ever. Not the way the process has worked. If the process has changed and we're deciding that tonight, that's fine, let us know, we'll go forward and we'll base it off the board goals. The board goals are supposed to be what the board is going to do, not what the district is supposed to do. This budget is supposed to be what the district is supposed to do with the board's support to do those things. That's the difference.
I don't think he's suggesting that we build the budget around our board goals. I think he's simply saying that as we move along through this project, I'd like to try to keep tabs, could you, you know, FYI, by the way, you know, probably this X percent or this part of the budget feeds into your board goals, you know, for your knowledge.
I think it might be too, that you're just looking for clarity maybe, because there's many things that the district has just implemented, or is working on, that we, that they already have in place, that's already going for character education and the bullying, such as sources of strength, there's money being funded for that, restorative practices, that's also going towards it. So there's already things that are being maintained, and were just implemented a year ago, two years ago, that are working towards these goals, as well as when you see a behavior specialist, the addition of school counselors, all of these things truly already are for the support of what we truly want to. I know the PTSA Tri-High, in February, all three schools are coming together, and Paul Alexander will be talking there, and he is an Amherst police detective, he will be doing education about bullying, drug use, I mean, there are things that are already being done that are very supportive of our goals. I can't imagine trying to break down what the district is spending that meets our needs. I think maybe you're looking at what are, just maybe some ideas that we can even share further with you, it seems...
It's a fairly basic question. It's not necessarily lining up board goals to drive budget, not at all. It really is just, what struck me in looking at this for the first time, is that I'm not seeing, some of the things I've seen in the district plan and in our, in our goals about wellness, character education, there are pockets of it, and that's a perfect thing, a perfect example of, we have a behavior specialist, so that feeds in. I'm not even aware of what the current budget is and the programs we currently have running. I just know from many of our discussions as a board, wellness was a very large topic, bullying, I mean, that takes very, you know, it's a very large scope there, right? So is it bullying, is it drug use, is it e-cigarette use, is it diversity, is it character education? Yes, to all those things. And so I, you know, to your point, we're already doing many of those things. What I'd like to feel more comfortable with is, what are we doing in those areas? What's working? What's not working? Are we happy with that progress? And if we want to do more, do we need money to do more in those pockets? And if so, where would it be reflected here, beyond a behavior specialist, et cetera? So it's more, Sean, to your point, it seems like it's the right question to ask at this point in time, and Dr. Marsloff and his associates may come back and say, here are the 20 things that we're already doing. We think we've got it covered, awesome. But we may say, hey, may, the leadership may circle and say, hey, we're doing these 15 things, but we'd love to do five more, because that's going to really push us over the threshold of effectiveness. Well, if we're going to do those five things, then we may need additional funding for that. And I just didn't see that, again, I know this is very preliminary, I didn't see any room or buckets for some of those things.
Other comments, questions? Yes?
Just a quick question to probably Dr. Marsloff, because I have been approached on several occasions by some parents, so I need to ask whether the topic of bus aids is potentially back on the table or not on the table, or maybe, or any of the above.
It is not. And the reason, there's a multitude of reasons. We did a pilot last year, we did not find it to be an effective item to deter misbehavior on buses. We really don't seem to have a large number of disciplinary issues on our buses, not saying we don't have any, but certainly, when our temporary bus aids came onboard next, or last year, they were surprised on how quiet and orderly our buses were. They thought they were going to run into huge issues and problems on the buses, and it wasn't like that.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, and everybody that put the time and effort into putting this first, this first development together. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the Medicaid compliance program continuation as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the property tax settlements as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain, and I'm just going to comment that while I don't currently serve as the town attorney anymore, due to any kind of involvement from the town, I'm still going to abstain from this.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries eight zero one. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please pass them to Mrs. Seraphin. Please send your reports within a few days of the meeting if at all possible. Does anyone need any additional coverage for any upcoming meetings? Mrs. Leatherboro?
So High Middle decided to reschedule, they have a meeting next Wednesday, it was supposed to be tomorrow. I can't attend because I am going to Dodge that night, so I believe it's the 17th, if anyone's available.
Okay.
ETA meeting?
ETA.
Board meeting, or a board visitation?
No, it's their PTA, Wednesday night at seven. I've already spoken with the president, though, she does understand if no one can make it.
Okay. Anyone available?
Can you say the date again, Theresa?
It would be January 17th, next Wednesday at 7:00 at High Middle.
I may be able to do it for you, but I'll have to follow up with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? There is no curriculum matters to discuss this month. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the three tenure recommendations as presented? Dr. R. McClary, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations go out to Mary Quicklinsky, Forest Elementary and North High School social worker, Danielle May, Maple West Elementary teacher, and Lee Ann Smith, Middle Elementary and receiving tenure. And hopefully I didn't sweat it too hard.
As a former student in the Williamsburg School District, graduated in '07 from Williamsburg South, I feel like my education has really become full circle, coming back as an educator now in the district, and I just want to thank all of the board members, as well as Dr. Marslov and my wonderful principal, Dr. Galuzzo, for all of the support and for welcoming me as a tenure teacher now in the Williamsburg School District. I look forward to continue to challenge my students, to inspire my students, and to make this district the best it can be. Thank you so much.
Dr. Marslov, would you like to give us a facilities improvement and preservation plan update, please?
Yes, really, the, the main update is we're beginning our planning for the 2018 project that we hope to vote on in December, and we're also submitting all of our reports to the state for building aid for the project work that was recently completed.
Thank you. There are no special needs and student activities to discuss this month. Moving on to committee of the whole, does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole? Now I heard a couple people grumbling on things they'd like to bring up. Anything? All right, well, I think I would like to bring up a concept. I had emailed everybody on this. There's a concept called the Schools Share Tables Program. I learned about this in the Williamsburg United for Meaning Field Learning Group on Facebook. It was a post on November, the, actually, no, the, the news article was November the 11th. For those following at home or that have not read this article from the Orlando Sentinel, if you go to a browser, go to HTTPS colon slash slash tiny URL dot com. I had to make sure I found somebody that did this non-case sensitive, tiny URL dot com slash Y seven X, F as in Frank, two nine L as in Lima, H as in hotel. If you go to that, you will come up with the, the article in question. Tiny URL dot com slash Y seven X F two nine L H. It's an article that talks about, in the Orlando area, how 20 some odd different schools in the district there have worked on reducing waste in the elementary school system by using unused food and having a community shared table concept in the elementary schools. And the idea is that because the federal school lunch program mandates that children have to take fruits and vegetable regardless if they're going to eat them or not, they're required to take them when going down the lunch line, the idea of this concept is that it's a kind of a community table, that anything that the student or child does not want to eat can put it on the table for others that might be interested in that, so it could be fruit pears or something like that, and anybody would like something extra, or two something extras, or five something extras, can grab these items off the terrible and either eat them and consume them there, or take them home, which is one of the underlying ideas here, is, is for students that might, might not have a good, well-rounded, you know, nutritional program at home, especially maybe skipping dinners and stuff like that, and their, their lunch program is, is the best time that they have. The idea of this is that it helps reduce waste, less mess, less waste. Keys to this, it cannot be open, must be individually sealed and packaged, so it's not like a, a bowl of fruit, can't be something like that, can't be something, you know, that the student brought from home that's, you know, obviously been exposed to stuff. I'm kind of open to the idea, I, I wasn't sure if the board would be interested, I've, I've heard grumblings that various schools have tried this with some success, not some success. At the end of the week, I guess, the idea of this with the various schools is that the food could be then donated to the local food bank, the local church, local charity, and from reading the article and then doing a little Googling here, which we know how much we can trust in Google, it does seem like it's very successful in, in a lot of other places around the country, and a lot of the local charities and churches and stuff like that jump at the opportunity to be able to get especially a massive amount of food like this. There are challenges to this, obviously, refrigeration challenges come to mind, you know, how do you keep things like perishable items like milk and stuff like that? But it does not seem like it, it breaks any laws or rules or regulations or anything like that, as long as certain rules and responsibilities are followed. So after explaining all of this to you, I just wanted to see if there's any interest from the board in having maybe the district look into this a little bit more, not saying we need to vote or, or even think about doing this moving forward, but I'm no expert in this area, I'm just bringing a concept that actually another parent brought, that I looked into, and it seemed like a good idea, and I couldn't really come up with a really bad reason as to say, no, this is why we can't do this. So I was kind of hoping to throw it out there and see what the rest of you thought, and if there was interest, we could ask the district to look into it and see if, if it's feasible, and if it is, great, if not, you know, so be it. Dr. McLeary?
I'm sure it would be investigated, it certainly sounds like a great concept. My first thought is New York State health laws, that there, as you know how New York State is, I'm sure there are prohibitive things involved with that. And I would also request if you move forward, that you poll the principals to see if it's practical in their particular school. It certainly is a great idea, but like so many great ideas, there's rules and regulations that would affect it, that's all.
Couldn't agree with you more. I, I think we would ask the, the district to, to poll the principals, and certainly, hopefully the principals would poll their staff and stuff like that, too. And again, I, I don't even know how we would administer something like this, you know, staffing wise. I, I've read in a couple areas that some staff gladly would volunteer, but I don't want to impose that either. That's not fair to, to ask me or, or anybody to ask to, to, to take that responsibility. Hold on one sec, Mrs. Beeger, or was there somebody else over here?
I have raised my hand, and I was going to say virtually the same thing that Susan said, and I second that thought, I think it's a lovely idea. I think it's worth looking into, New York State regulations and, and health code and those kinds of things, if it's a possibility, or if it's something that, or parts of it are possible. It's always a great idea to eliminate waste and to support feeding our kids.
Mr. Mecca?
At, at various schools that I've visited, this, this does happen in New York State, but I don't know how formally sanctioned it is, just by the addition of a table or a desk near the serving area. When students don't want something, they put it there, and then other students that might want another take it from there. It doesn't require any staffing the way I've seen it done, and I think the, the legal requirement might be that the kitchen is not allowed to re-serve unused food that goes out, but if a student chooses to put it on a table next to the serving area and another student chooses to take it, that might be okay, I don't know, we'd have to check it out for sure, but it seems to work well and doesn't require any human resources as far as I'm aware of.
Other comments, questions? Mrs. Leatherboro?
Just that, I would want the cafeteria managers at each school to be consulted.
I think we would have to, I, I can't imagine even considering something like this without talking to them. Other questions, comments, concerns?
I have something.
Yes, please.
I, I know that sometimes parents have difficulty with getting their children to eat and eat proper foods, but other parents have difficulty in trying to prevent their kids from overeating. So that was my one reservation when I read the article about this program, was that some kids may go to that table, not that I have a kid like that, but he may or may not go to that table over and over and over again, and, you know, you know, we have a problem with childhood obesity and all that, and not that we have a grave problem in our district, I don't think, but that's a concern of mine.
Noted. Thank you. So with that, is there enough interest to ask the district to look into this and poke around, do you think? The idea of the committee of the whole? And then we can bring it back as a board item to discuss formally at a later date? Okay, great, thank you, guys. Anything else under committee of the whole?
Excuse me, was that, what was decided there? Did we have a vote whether we're bringing it back to the table or not?
We're, we're just going to ask the district to just look into it and see if it's a feasible.
There were five people that wanted to?
I think everybody's head voted, nodded yes, to at least look into it. Do it, do, do you want me to get, get a formal vote?
Formal vote.
Okay, can I have a, a show of hands, please, of all those interested in investigating this concept further?
So, and that we'll probably just start with communication.
Correct.
Of leadership and maybe-
Yep, and if there's, I, I don't think there's any cost associated with this, but if there is, obviously, we would want to know that. If there's any opposition with New York State law, obviously, anything like that, talk to, you know, principals, talk to the, the cafeterias and stuff like that to get their opinions.
I really agree with what Tony just said. If it's permitted with no cost and it goes out to homeless shelter or something like that, I could see that, but not a free swap. I think we would be-
Well, that would be stuff I think to look into during this. Yeah, I, I don't think we're, we're trying to set policy on this yet, it's just kind of a open-ended to look into it to see, you know, what's the pros, what's the cons, and then come back, and we can kind of then have a more formal discussion here at the table about the concept, and, and if it's something we want to move forward with, we can make a motion and actually vote on it then.
Are you putting a timeline on this motion, or is this just open-ended?
This wasn't actually a formal motion, so-
I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't going to formally put a timeline on it, I, I figured we could come back to it in a, in a couple months. Dr. Marslov, do, do you have any thoughts on this?
Why don't you direct the superintendent to look into the field of a food share table at all of our schools, and I will come back to the board at a later date with further information and specifics, what impacts, is impacted by policy, New York State law, and other concerning items, whether they be cost or students taking items off the table, and, and the obesity issue, as Mrs. Vasquez and Mrs. Van Seis mentioned, so all those things at a later date.
Is there a, a proposed timeline that we should put on this for you?
I don't think I need a timeline, and we'll come to you guys either most likely in February or March, whenever we can get the information that we need to adequately inform the board.
Okay, thank you. Is that enough information for the rest of the board? Show of hands to just proceed? Thank you, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee of the wholes? Didn't mean that to take so long, apologies. Is there any correspondence that anyone would like to discuss? All right, would someone like to make a motion to meet again in executive session to continue our discussion on employment matters relating to particular persons or persons, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and current litigation? Dr. Venator, second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mr. Meyer, is there a second? Dr. Venator, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next regular board meeting will be February the 13th, 2018, with the first public session at 7:00 PM, and the second public session after the committee of the whole. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Van Seis, second? Mrs. Vasquez, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.